Are you starting? John, I stopped at you.
Do I need to roll call, right? No, I'm at the chair. She can start. The day is Wednesday, June 18th, 2025. The time is 5:45 PM and we're going to call this Urban Renewal Agency meeting to order. We're going to do a roll call. So today we have Council Russ Hubbard, we have Council Mark Gunderson, we have City Administrator John Walsh, myself, Council President Jessica Chilton, Commissioner Brandon Sunday, City Attorney Ashley Wygod, and City Staff President Jenny Dimshaw. Ready to announce everyone else? Yeah, that are present. Okay. So we have, I'm not used to doing this. So we have City Staff Kathy Payne, we have City Staff Lisa Scholl, and we have City Staff. Jenny Dimshaw. I said, Jane. Oh, sorry. Very much. Sorry. I'm so sorry. Okay, so. And the mayor is also with us. So we're going to consent agenda for approval. Items one, UR A Draftman's dated April 2nd, 2025. Anyone have any questions about the agenda item approval? Bring in a motion? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to consent agenda for approval. Line item one, UR the Urban Renewal Agency Draftnet is dated April 2nd, 2025.
We have a motion and a second. Call for a vote, Council Hubbard? Council Gunderson? Mayor Massey? Council Sunday? And I'm an I as well. So then we're going to open this public hearing 5:45 PM for the FY 25-26 UR A Budget Adoption. Any visitor comments? Is there any public comments?
When you have a budget that has about $100,000 and you have a contingency of 600 and some thousand, that's not a contingency. That's like a slush fund. Don't worry about seeing that big of a contingency. That's like an incredible amount of money. Contingency, it's six times your entire budget. In addition, the statement about says that Cascade, the Arcadia is going to close within this month. That's probably not happening. I think that it's an obligation for the Finance Director and finance in general to run on facts, not run on dreams. And while we all want Arcadia to happen, I don't think that we should base our budget on something that we hope to happen. And when you include in our budget for the renewal that, oh, it's going to happen, it's going to improve it. That's a problem. That is not how the city should be run. That's not how the urban agency should be run. Fact of the matter is that Urban Renewal Agency will be in big trouble if this project does not happen. And of course, that's just poor planning, but you're not going to fix that today. But I want to see reality, not hopes and dreams.
Other public comments? Anyone online? Okay, so we have an action item here. Number two, UR 011, adopting the FY 25-26 Budget. Discussion? Do we have a motion to pass this?
Motion, go. I'll make a motion to approve the Urban Review, Urban Renewal 011, adopting fiscal year 2025-26 Budget.
You can read that whole title, please.
Pull it up, Kathy. That's all we have on our papers.
I got it up here.
Just the title there?
Yeah, that whole title there, please.
Resolution, making a motion to adopt resolution numbers UR-11. A resolution of the City of St. Helens Urban Renewal Agency adopting the budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year. Making appropriations, declaring, declaring, declaring tax increment and collecting the maximum, maximum amount of the division of the tax.
We have a second? We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Council Hubbard? Council Gunderson? Mayor Massey? Council Sunday? And I'm an I as well, so motion passes. Okay, we have the Administration Administrator Report.
That's a placeholder on the agenda there, the.
Anything?
Only that we're in a savings mode to not spending money so that we can make our debt service payment in three years or three months when we begin, so being as conservative as possible at this point. And our financial, working with our financial consultants, we've, you know, assumed the lowest growth possible scenario and feel like it'll still perform well enough to make those payments.
Thank you, John. We will go ahead and adjourn this meeting then. Not going to discuss or I'm not going to vote. I apologize.
Interview and.
All right, today is Wednesday, June 18th, 2025 at 6:00 PM, and we're going to bring this council public hearing to open. So topic is the Fiscal Year 2024-25 Supplemental Budget, and at this time, I'm going to declare an actual conflict of interest because my husband is a City of St. Helens Police Officer. And while I thought that we are extremely close, that Senate Bill 983 was going to be signed off today or yesterday did not happen. So I'm going to recuse myself from the discussion and the actual vote. Can I read the script for public comment? All right, so now is the time for visitor comments that are related to city business or an issue on today's agenda and provide information that City Council what? I think public comment comes after. Well, it's. Okay. Talk about. Oh, okay, perfect. Sounds good to me.
So you had my memo in the packet. There are two resolutions relating to the fiscal year 2025 budget. One is for a supplemental budget for which requires a public hearing. The other resolution is to adjust appropriations between categories. So the supplemental budget resolution is required because the original budget did not appropriate the capital outlet in the Street SDC Fund for the downtown infrastructure project. This does not increase spending, but to properly categorize the expenditure.
Does anyone have any questions about that? Sorry, I'm not running this meeting. You did great. Does anybody have any? Council Sunday?
I can't find it now that I want it, Gloria, but there's a part, I don't know whether it's this meeting or the next one, but it was about $4,000 related to a COLA.
The what?
Well, that's City Council, I believe.
And what about it?
Where is that? I can't find it now.
Is it on this supplemental budget?
No, it's not on the supplemental budget. No, it's going to be on the the approved budget that you'll be adopting tonight for fiscal year 2026.
So we want to make changes to that. That's when we should talk about it?
Correct.
Yeah, nothing at this time.
Council Hubbard?
I'm okay with what she said. I'm curious on the $10 and $20 a month. Is that something that's coming up?
Your confusion was my confusion as well. So don't feel alone because I was kind of confused about where we're at with it as well. But I think, sounds like we're going to discuss this later. It would be more appropriate time to discuss actual dialogue about what we're doing with the budget moving forward in the evening meeting when it's on our agenda.
So we've got this, this section right here is just for the supplemental budget. And you just need to have a public comment period for that. The next one on the agenda.
It's the State Revenue and Sharing Budget.
And we can talk about the budget at that time. That would be appropriate for the next.
Gloria, is it right that this supplemental budget is, applies to the fiscal year 24-25 budget? So you're closing out this 24 or 25 budget so that then you can adopt.
Okay.
For next year. Sense. This is just kind of loose ends for the final budget calculations or budget document.
So we need to make a motion to adopt the 24-25 supplemental budget.
Yeah. Not on this meeting right now. It's going to be on your regular meeting agenda to adopt.
But we do.
This is just for the purpose of the public hearing.
We do need to open it to public comment. Okay, did Council Gunderson, did you have any more dialogue? Open it for public comment? Okay, we're going to open this up for public comment now. Public comment?
Nobody online.
Nobody online? All right, so we are going to close this public hearing at 6:04 PM. Is that our? Is that a?